I'd like to call to order the July 22 Town Council Meeting. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Paul Panzik.
Here.
Wayne Pandinas.
Here.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swett. Craig Phillips.
Here.
David Westland.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, so we have a call. Item number four, approval of the minutes. You've got minutes for March 11, April 22, and May 27. If there's no questions, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Wayne, is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Supported by Mr. Schilling. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak.
Aye.
Mr. Panzik.
Yes.
Mr. Pandinas.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swett.
Yes. So that passes five to zero. Item number five is public comment. Have anybody signed up for public comment?
Adrian Bogario. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Adrian Bogario, 11747 West 98th Avenue. Ever since Beth Hernandez became clerk treasurer, I had to go with police escort to pay my bills. I have to go with police escort to request information which she never, ever provided since 2016. Second time, last meeting, she had me escorted out and I didn't even had a speech. I looked behind me to see who's behind me was Frizell's wife start shouting at me without me saying a word. Then he started shouting. I turned around, I tried to avoid, I said, "You see what's going on? I am escorted out." It was Wednesday. Thursday, I went and I talked to Chief Flores, you know, and I told him, I said, "I want her arrested, Frizell and his wife." Frizell's and Beth Hernandez's gang of political judicial and police gang has to be removed from our town. In 2001, Frizell put me in jail on June 20th for nothing, absolutely nothing. On June 28th this year, I get beaten up per her request, jailed, and charged with things which I haven't done. This has to stop. Beth Hernandez and her father and her mother have to be removed from this place. Thank you so much. And I hope all the charges, I told Mike, he's a very good friend of mine, we were very good relation ourselves. I was in good relationship with Barney and Forbes. I had their signs like I had your sign on my lawn when you ran for office. The moment Beth Hernandez became clerk treasurer, she reorganized her gang, fired, and I know she fired the Quetin.
We need to stay towards the agenda items, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Bellicki and I live at 10064 Alcott Avenue. I also work for the clerk treasurer, Beth Hernandez. I've been there almost four years and I'm also the recent newly elected precinct committee person for my little neighborhood. The reason that I'm here tonight is I have been there almost 27 years in August. We have raised three children there. My grandson and their family lived with us for four and a half years, recently moving out. And I have seen St. John grow from a little town to what it is today. And our street, Alcott, especially the corner of Alcott and 100 and 1st, has been a thorough fair for all these years. Once they opened up 102nd, it did slow down a little bit. Once they opened up 231, it also slowed down a little bit. But because of all the traffic that is going on Wicker and everybody cutting through, it has grown very busy. We also have a lot of young children now in my neighborhood because it's changing over. And we also have, because of the growth of the town, a lot more younger drivers. So I'm asking if we can have more police presence at that corner to catch and warn people, please stop, you know, start stopping. We also have a ring doorbell and I have offered that to the police department if they would like to connect and they can actually see that whole corner and what goes on. So I thank you for your time. You have a good evening.
Okay, thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
And we will refer that to the Captain Flores. Maggie Orlick.
Orchuk.
Yes, I'm saying, sorry. Can you pronounce that for me?
Orchuk.
Okay.
Can I take this off?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. It'll be easier that way. I am, my name is Maggie Orchuk and I live in St. John, 8422 Heron Lake Road. So I wrote the letter also to, this is my neighbor, I wrote the letter to Paul Panchuk and councilman members of the St. John Council. And we would like to talk about our Heron Lake cleanup. The pond is experiencing a significant increase in algae blooms each year during the growing season and we respectfully ask for the town to consider a formal remediation plan for, that may include, a treatment schedule consistent with other ponds in St. John, phosphorus nutrient mitigation to reduce the source of algae blooms. And we're talking about phosphorus from fertilizers that are going down with the rain to the pond and feeding the pond and feeding the algae. And we did have clean lake for many years. You did a good job, but about three years back, it started to be really, really bad and we could not really go on a pedal boat or kayak because of the high and dense and stinky algae. And we would like to solve this problem. And I know that you talked to other companies and you're familiar with the subject. We know that there is phosphorus in the lake in the water and it's causing to grow this algae and we would like this to be neutralized with, there are some chemicals to neutralize this phosphorus. So the algae will stop growing, so we can enjoy the lake and the view also, very important, the view. And the third point is fountain, a ration system to circulate water and promote both healthy bacteria that aid in reducing the nutrient load and a healthy environment for herons, swans, turtles, and fish and wildlife, right? I did go to a few homes, don't have too many signatures, but I have signatures of homeowners around the lake. Should I give it to anybody?
You can give that to the town manager, yes.
So this is one problem that we would like to address. And another point is that mosquito spraying.
Okay.
And I sent also email to Paul Panchuk and all the councilmen's men and that included the landscaping of Ventura Estates, which is already taken care of, thank you so much. I'm not sure, I didn't even look when I was driving by if you put already bushes there? Do you know?
I haven't been out there today, I don't know.
Did you receive a proposal for some?
It's cleaned out, though.
Yeah, it's cleaned out. So you didn't put anything yet there?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time.
All right. So that was the first point. And the second point was the mosquito spraying. This is huge deal for me and for my neighbors too. We live by the lake and it's partially, it was wetland and we have wildlife there. We have different insects, yes. We have beautiful insects too. We have fireflies and they're so beautiful at night when you look, you know, there is sunset, water, and fireflies. This is really beautiful view and if you spray those mosquito spray, they will not be alive. So we have fireflies, we have dragonflies that eat-
So you don't want mosquito spray?
At all.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Because it kills the whole ecosystem.
Okay.
Okay, it kills the bees, hornets, the pollinators of our crops, pollinators for our, that we need for our fruits and vegetables. It kills dragonflies, fireflies, it kills the birds that eating the bugs. What else do I have? Caterpillars, crickets, birds, we have hummingbirds, and they're all affected with chemicals that they're spraying us. We have frogs in the lake, we have fox, we have dogs, we have swans, deer, of course geese, geese are everywhere, but they're our nature from God, right? So we have to take care of them. And all the spraying is poisoning the wildlife.
Okay.
Also, the problem is that whenever I walked with my husband for a walk, I was sprayed. The truck is coming and it sprays the whole street and they don't really give, if somebody is walking, they're walking, they're jogging, running, biking, and everybody's getting sprayed. This is not right. They are sprayed with chemicals, dangerous chemicals that give cancer, and this is not right to spray people. Also, the children are playing on the yard, playing basketball, biking, they are on the yard, what else? Driving cars, bikes, and they are sprayed also. I think it's not fair to spray people with it.
Okay.
I did the research when I talked to Steve Kill before. He said, "Oh, the company says it's, uh, it's safe for people and safe for pets and it dissipates after spraying after a few hours." I did the research and it's completely something else. The chemical stays on the ground, on the bushes, on the grass for 29 days. Everybody who works on the grass, every child, every pet that walks on the grass will get cancer. Okay? This is, this is dangerous stuff.
Okay. We're a little bit on overtime, but if you could wrap it up, please.
Okay, so you know my point. Also, when they spraying, I can hear them. I run all the time and close all the windows so the spray will not go to my, to my house. I don't want to breathe it, I don't want to be sprayed with it, I don't want to get cancer, I don't want to have a health issue. So please, please don't spray at all, if it's possible, in St. John, because you're killing bees and the wildlife and people.
Okay.
We have right to be healthy. We do have right to be healthy. I know some people do not understand the issue and they want to be sprayed because they don't like mosquitoes, but they, but they don't get deeper, deeper to it.
Okay.
Also, the spray stays for 29 days.
Okay.
So it's a long time for children to be exposed to it and pets also that get cancer.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Please do not spray.
I just have one question. What, what could we do about possibly going about getting air ration for our pond, like a fountain like Prairie West Park has? We do have a neighbor over there that put in their own air ration and it does work on his area. So is there a way that we can possibly?
Which?
Do you guys have homeowners association?
No.
No. That is, we did when the first sub-
No, we never, we never had.
Jerry, can you have her step up?
We never had.
Yeah, if you could step up to the microphone and ask your question.
And we need your name too, please.
Name and address.
Thank you.
I address that as a third point when I talk, when I talk about-
Let me talk, so I can talk.
Foundation aeration, yes.
Dawn Lencioni-Cordom, 8332 Heron Lake Road. I was just checking to find out about the air ration system, if there's anything we can do. Because all the other parks in the area do have the fountains and stuff in them which then you don't have to spray the chemicals as much.
Right.
Because it's breaking up all the phosphates and all that stuff. So, and I know you have a pump station or some lift station or something that's over on Heron Lake Road that would have access to power, just wondering if that was a feasible thing?
So I know there's-
That's Lift Station 12 and I don't think the aeration's going to come, it's expensive.
Okay.
Now, Lake Hills, they have a homeowners association, they got a couple small ponds, they put in their own fountains, their own electric, and they're paying for that.
Okay.
And getting back to your-
Which pond is that?
That's in Lake Hills.
Lake Hills, okay.
But getting, getting back to your pond, at the beginning of this year, we met with Mr. Rogers and we had another company come out and we paid for him to give an evaluation of your lake. And it's real shallow, it's 18 to 24 inches deep and another 18, 20 inches amuck. There was recommended, well, you could put dye in, but if you put dye in it, it's too shallow. The sun and all the phosphorus, like you say, from the fertilizers, you're not going to be able to take care of it. We can spend, or you can spend $40,000 on that and it's not going to go away. It should be deeper, it's just a shallow wetlands, you know, and they call the lake. So we did look at it and I think just a few days ago or last week, they treated it, the regular guy treated it, and I think he's going to treat it again real soon.
Yeah, I-
I don't know the schedule, but yeah.
Okay.
But we did look at it with Mr. Rogers and another neighbor and we did what we could do with it. But that, we're spending eight to $10,000 a year on it right now.
But I know that they treating it always the same way, but if you have different chemicals in the water like phosphorus, you need to change the way you treat the lake, you need to change the chemicals so you can balance or, I'm sorry, so you can neutralize the phosphorus.
Right, now, we let the pros do that. I'm not a pro and we relied on him and we got a good report on it and-
Is that, is the report FOIA-able for us to get the, do you guys have FOIAs here? I'm from Illinois, so-
Oh, I, if you want, you're talking about getting a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to see what he said and-
Yeah, I think, I think we have that.
Do you want to look into getting our own aeration or do something to get that information?
Yeah, you can send a request to the clerk's office, to the clerk's office and then it will be filed up on.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So what I'm saying is, yes, he was treating it because we talked about it, that it needs to be treated, but the question is, is he treating the old way that when the lake did not have that many problems with algae, or if he changed the chemicals to treat and balance the phosphorus?
I can't speak for what he did, he's the professional. And, you know, you'll get that in the report, the report from the first company, it'll tell you what's in there, the depth and everything.
Okay.
There's not hardly any fish in there.
Okay, but I would like you to look at it, if he changed the treatment for this lake, because the treatment for like three, four years is not working anymore. The algae is so dense and so smelly, you can't even kayak or go there, it's just too dense and it's too tall. So I would say that he needs to change the treatment to neutralize this phosphorus so it will not grow at all.
All right, well you can-
And it's possible, we talked about-
If you would, if you would put that in writing, email and email that to our, to our town manager-
I did, I did.
And he can address that?
I did.
We can't address that because we're not professionals on how to treat anything. There's also a difference between lakes that the town owns and lakes that the homeowners own.
Mm-hmm.
So those get treated a little bit differently as well. But we will take it, get the information and you can request that FOIA request and we can work from there.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And also, speaking, speaking of spraying of mosquitoes, I sent this request to not to spray for mosquitoes in email.
Yes, I got that.
You got that?
Yep.
And two days ago, they were spraying on my street, Heron Lake, with mosquito spray. I was just very upset with this.
Okay, thank you.
Why, why did this happen?
Because we typically spray for mosquitoes in this town because people can get sick.
But we asked not to.
Getting bit by mosquitoes, so that's-
But we asked not to.
Okay, that's, thank you for your comments, is all I can say at this point.
So what can I expect? Are you going to consider my request not to spray for mosquitoes?
I'm not sure. We would, I'll, we can have that discussion. We'll talk about it to see if that's an option. My guess is recommendations aren't to spray for mosquitoes because, because of West Nile virus and other issues, but I can't answer that.
Yes, but it's also cancerous and dangerous to people.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Item number six, a public hearing, we've got a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1708.
So-
I'm sorry.
So you want to, I want to go back to number five if you, if you can, Mr. Swett.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You want to see if there were any written public comments?
I apologize. Beth?
We did have one that came from Mr. Bill Purcell, 8649 Fairway Drive, and this is actually in reference to your last Town Council meeting. He says he was opposed to item G on your prior agenda, which was payment to Thiel Brothers. He is opposed to paying the Thiel Brothers and their small cabinet shop nearly $100,000 for nothing more than a minor inconvenience. The Shop 96 project will not encroach on their property to warrant such a payment. The Thiel business is word of mouth and builder direct, it is not advertised, and showroom sold cabinetry. It has never been an open invitation noticeable business to the community, but rather a hidden, relatively unknown family endeavor. There is no real legitimate reason to pay them almost $100,000 simply because they are longtime residents. The new project cannot possibly harm their business. To the contrary, they should pay the town for improving the opportunity to actually be noticed as a viable business via new traffic near their place of business. They should buy a big sign and put it on their building so traffic passing nearby can know what they offer. But I guess it's much easier to guilt the Town Council, do nothing, and get a $100,000 check. Don't pay them this money.
Anything else?
That's it.
Do you have anything else?
No, but I do have a comment with regard to item six when you get there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have something else, Paul?
Was there any else from the floor?
Oh, anybody else from the floor for public comment, I'm sorry?
Hi, Alyssa Lane, I'm also a Heron Lake resident. There's actually a lot of us here in the audience. So you made a comment about the guy came out and that there's no fish in the lake. So we've been on the lake for eight years and there used to be a lot of fish in the lake. And then the treatment company was changed and three years ago, there was a huge die-off. Like we had bass that were this big that washed up, they killed off all of the wildlife in the lake. We had no birds, no deer, anything for several years after that happened and they're just starting to come back. And we know this because the birds are finally back this year. Like we had no heron on the lake anymore, which was crazy. But all the changes that are happening on the lake with the algae, it wasn't always like this. This is something that is a new problem and so that's why we feel very strongly that it's because of the way that it's being treated that we have the problem, because it was never a problem before. We had a ton of wildlife, we had a ton of fish, we had no problems with the algae. And then when the company was changed several years ago, we had the die-off and that's when all the problems started with all of the excessive algae blooms. So that's why we feel that it really needs to be looked into is because this is just something that can be managed better and it's being mismanaged, which is why we're having the issues. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that is something we can probably look into.
I got pictures of the dead fish too that washed up three years ago.
All right, anybody else comment? Okay, then we will move on. Item number six, a public hearing to consider ordinance 1708, which is an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds for the purpose of funding the cost of certain infrastructure improvements with the, within the town with an amount not to exceed $5,350,000. Mr. Westland.
So with regard to ordinance 1708 and 1709, I know what your agenda says, but this is really just the first reading?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's not, it's kind of incorrectly listed as a public hearing. Your public hearing will take place on August 26th, your next, I believe that's your next meeting. August 26th is when you will hold the public hearing and hear public comment. Tonight, for ordinance 1708 and 1709, you're just looking to hear it on, you know, to read it on first reading.
Okay.
And then set it for the public hearing, so your motion should be to approve ordinance 1708 on first reading, set it for public hearing for August 26th, and for consideration on second reading on that date as well. And the same would be true for ordinance 1709, which is next. And I would tell you, at your public hearing, you'll have your bond counsel here to make a presentation, answer any questions that you folks have or that members of the public have, that would be the appropriate time for that.
So we are going to approve this and set it, set a public hearing for August 26th.
Right, approve the first reading.
Okay.
Set a public hearing for-
August 26th.
And then set it on your agenda for second reading on August 26th as well.
Okay, so that's the recommendation, is there a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1708 on first reading and set public hearing for the next Town Council meeting, August 26th, 2020.
And then also schedule second reading for approval on August 26th?
Yes.
Okay, it's a motion by Mr. Schilling, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Support by Mr. Panzik, roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. So that passes five to zero. And then we can do the same thing then for ordinance 1709. Do you want to make that motion again, Mr. Schilling?
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1709 on first reading only and to have public comment at the August 26th meeting along with-
Second reading.
Second reading.
Okay, motion by Mr. Schilling, is there support for that?
Second.
Supported by Mr. Panzik. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. Okay, that passes five to zero. So, Mr. Westland, we've handled those two properly?
Yes.
Okay, so we can move on to number seven, new business?
Correct.
All right. Okay, item 7A, to consider ordinance 1707, which is an ordinance revising the subdivision control ordinance. This received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Mr. Panzik, as the liaison to the Plan Commission, do you have any comments?
Sure, this is, the subdivision control ordinance is one of our two major governing documents when it, as it pertains to development in St. John. And one of the things that residents desire and we promised to bring forth was cleaning up and revising, modernizing the, both the subdivision control ordinance and the zoning ordinance. So our subdivision control ordinance is complete, it's been gone over with a fine-tooth comb. I want to thank everyone who had a hand in it. Everyone, everyone and staff played a part. Our attorneys, everyone did a great job with it. We have all the changes we want in there, we've double-checked, triple-checked. Plan Commission did a lot of work on it too, so I'm thankful for everyone's hard work. work on that. Uh, looking forward to getting this on the books. It's going to make for, uh, better infrastructure development in our subdivisions, longer-lasting, less maintenance cost on the town. Um, it puts a little more, um, a little more bite in our ordinance and make sure everything goes in the right way.
Okay, so I did have one, um, call from a resident regarding this and was hoping that, um, there would be some verbiage in here to, um, address the spacing of fire hydrants and also flagging the fire hydrants. And I see that those are both in there, so, um, I'll be happy to hear that. Any other comments or questions?
No, I think you guys did a great job. Rick, everybody that was involved that, uh, it's been, what, twenty years since it's been changed or?
Long time.
Yeah.
About eighteen years.
You guys did a real good job. Uh, I know there was a hiccup, uh, at the last meeting, but you guys corrected some more stuff, and everybody did a, a great job with, with getting that done. And I want to thank everybody that was involved.
Okay, so do I have a motion on ordinance seventeen oh seven?
Motion to consider ordinance seventeen oh seven, an ordinance revising the subdivision control ordinance, um, on first reading.
Is there support for that?
I second that.
I'll second it.
Oh.
Brian's first.
Mr. Pandinos beat you to it, Brian, thank you. Um, roll call, please?
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. So that passes five to zero. And then, um, I'm also looking for a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen oh seven on first reading. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Go ahead, Wayne.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pandinos, is there support for that? Support?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Blazak, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. So that passes five to zero. Um, so then we go to seven B, uh, which is resolution twenty-twenty dash oh seven dash twenty-two B. Um, this is a statement regarding the ordinance. Um, it's a resolution, a written statements, um, as amendments to the subdivision control ordinance that were passed earlier by the plan commission. Um, so this comes as a recommendation to, um, the plan commission. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty dash oh seven dash twenty-two B? So moved. By Mr. Panzik, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
By Mr. Schilling. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yeah.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. That passes five to zero. And we'll go to seven C to consider resolution twenty-twenty dash oh seven dash two-two, which is a resolution declaring uncollectible bad debt, uh, from the St. John ambulance billing. Um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty dash oh seven twenty-two.
By Mr. Schilling, is there support for that?
Second it.
Support by, um, Mr. Blazak. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes, that is approved, five to zero. Item seven D is to consider resolution twenty-twenty dash oh seven dash twenty-two A, which is a resolution supporting our police department and police appreciation day. Um, this has received a favorable recommendation, recommendation from the safety board. And I will, um, read, um, the resolution, um, after the wherethes and the recommendations. Uh, let it now be resolved by the town council of the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana. Um, section one, that the town council of the town of St. John, uh, representing the citizens and the voters of the town of St. John, Indiana, supports our police department and recognizes that its officers are a vital part of our daily lives. Section two, that the town council of the town of St. John is dedicating July twenty-third, twenty-twenty as police appreciation day in association with their efforts in placing the, their lives in danger every day to protect the citizens of the town. And section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approved by the town council of the town of St. John in conformance with act of law. Um, all this is resolved on the twenty-second day of July, twenty-twenty by the town council of St. John, Lake County, Indiana. Now, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty dash seven dash twenty-two A.
Thank you, Mr. Pandinos. Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Panzik. Can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Um, I also understand that there is a parade, um, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Relating to this, starting at Lake Central?
It starts at Lake Central. I think it's about five-thirty, but I'm not, not exactly sure. And it proceeds, proceeds down seventy-seven and, uh, I think Austin, and then it comes over to four, to, um, uh, thirty, and then over to the patrician. But I might have that direction wrong, but, uh, you know, check it out on the, on the internet. I don't know if we, do we have that on the, on the town internet? Um, Craig?
I would have to ask you, do, do we have anything on the website about?
We could get it there.
Police.
Yeah.
You know, we came up with, uh, with safety board meeting on Monday, and no one gave me anything to post.
Okay, I can get that information and put that on there.
Right, and I, and I apologize to the public if I gave out the wrong route, but it's, it's, it's close, but.
And then there is an event at the patrician.
Right, there is an, uh, 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 event at patrician. Uh, there'd be food there. I, I don't know if it's hot dogs and sandwiches, but yeah, uh, and it's all free. I, I think you pay for the food, but the, the event itself is.
Then it's free?
Right.
Okay.
And it's for a good cause.
Um, I can add in, it says here that the parade starts at Lake Central High School in St. John. Um, and then it says parade route will be determined. Residents are encouraged to line the parade route with flags and signs supporting law enforcement. Once all members arrive, they will, there will be a short ceremony at the patrician, uh, followed by some, uh, live entertainment. Food and drinks will be available for purchase, and it is a family-friendly event.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Maybe it'll take your route. All right. We move on. Um, item seven E, consider resolution twenty-twenty oh seven dash twenty-two C, which is in our resolution amending twenty-twenty dash oh four dash twenty-two, waiving late fees for delinquent utility fees during the COVID-nineteen, uh, pandemic. Uh, Beth, did you want to make any comments on this?
Um, this is just amending your prior, uh, resolution. The dates were a little bad, they were a little bit confusing, and so we wanted to clarify the dates, um, that you guys, uh, approved waiving, um, delinquent utility fees. Um, so the, the, this amended resolution will clarify that so far you have waived, um, fees for, um, April, May, and June billing.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Schilling?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty oh seven twenty-two C. Uh, this is a motion to waive the delinquent fees accrued during the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Right, based on the April, May, and June billing?
Yes.
Okay. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. That is approved, five to zero. Item F is to consider the annual donation to the St. John Volunteer Fire Department for the training site in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, that's an annual, uh, donation that we typically give. Do I have a motion?
Uh, motion to donate the fifteen thousand dollars to the St. John Volunteer Fire Department for use at their training site.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Item G, consider the annual donation to the Northwest Indiana Cancer Kids. That's N I C K, in the amount of one thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one thousand annual donation to Nick.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Thank you, Mr. Pandinos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. And so in a letter, that passes five to zero in the letter that we got from Nick. And they also highlight the fact that they're doing their Mark Hill, Mark Hill Memorial Golf Outing, which typically is in June, has been rescheduled for August twenty-seventh if anyone is interested in supporting them. Okay, item H is to consider the annual donation to the Trittown Safety Village in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, Mr. Blazak, any comments?
Hi, uh, I did some auditing of their records, uh, a couple of months back and, uh, found everything to be in reasonable order and well accounted for, so I have no particular, uh, problems with it. Um, we, along with Sheroville, Sheroville, the, uh, the loan balance, the building and such, and we chip in the same amount, twenty-seven-five, as Sheroville. Here's, picking up the fifteen, and we're going to work on getting dire to, uh, to support the village a little more than, uh, fifteen grand are kicking in. But other than that, uh, sure, the COVID problem, which is not allowing the flow of children to go through that normally go through on a weekly basis, it's, uh, it's a good cause.
Okay. I know I had some questions on it, and I'm okay. You okay with it, Wayne?
Yeah, um, I talked with Brian today, and, and there were some concerns, and I know twenty-seven thousand five hundred's a lot of money. Uh, there's a lot of good that goes on there. Um, I volunteered there with our church. Uh, but I'd like to, to get dire on board with, uh, putting a little bit more money. Um, I think that's only fair, um, but, um, I, I think I'm okay with it.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, we contribute twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar annual to the Safety Village for this year.
Okay, Mr. Blazak, thank you. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes, that is approved, five to zero.
And before you go anywhere to train the next one, I think Mr. Jarvis is out here. I see the mask, but I can't, uh, I'm, I'm bad on faces, but thank you for what you do out there.
Well, thank you very much.
You, you, you put a lot of time out there.
Thank you very much to the council.
I'd say, do you want to step up to the microphone a minute?
Yes.
Thank you for that, Wayne.
Yeah.
Bill Jarvis, thirteen fifty Eagle Ridge Drive. I want to thank the whole council. I mean, it's been growing leaps and bounds. The community is very happy with the Safety Village. We now have a fire museum. We have a veterans museum from Tom Clark from the history club of, uh, Lake Central. So a lot of people visit the Safety Village, even though we're not having children yet, but that's only the first semester. Uh, I talked to Dr. Veraco, and we should have children back in the second semester. So thank you very much for your support, because there's still bills to pay every day.
Sure. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you don't mind, uh, a comment, um, I, I want to make a mention that, uh, Brian did a good job, uh, vetting this cause, and, and I, and I always felt the Safety Village was a good cause, but we did have some concerns come forth to us about the museum and the other things happening there. So, uh, just in the interest of our taxpayers, uh, we sent Brian, our accountant, on site and worked with Mr. Jarvis, who, who willingly opened the books and verified that, and I just wanted to publicly state that so our residents are aware that it was all checked out, everything's legitimate. The money we give to the Safety Village goes to the Safety Village and, and supports exactly that cause, and, and, uh, so appreciate you opening the books and working with Brian on that, uh, just to satisfy our, our residents and taxpayers with all those questions. So appreciate what you do there.
And the fire museum and the veterans museum was completely donated by the community. That did not come out of our annual budget.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item I is to consider proposal rendered to the town of St. John to perform fireworks on September fourth. Craig, you want to work on this, or you want to, yeah?
Well, I can, all right, so I can, uh, explain to you that, uh, after the last council meeting, um, we did reach out to, uh, Mad Bomber, um, to give us a more detailed proposal. In addition to that, RKM Fireworks also gave us a more detailed proposal. Um, they were provided, uh, basically they were provided, uh, I think a cost, uh, based on the, the previous conversation. You have a detailed, um, basically layout of each of the shows, uh, included in the proposals. Um, I believe both of the, um, companies have been out to, um, visit the site, have made, um, some possible alternate suggestions on exact location of the, um, deployment of the show, that sort of thing. Um, so that's kind of yet to be determined. Uh, we did receive, um, insurance certificates from both companies. So I think, uh, you have a reasonable apples-to-apples comparison here with regard to the two proposals that you've received. Um, and at this point, um, basically it's up to the council to consider both of these proposals and, and decide which one you're interested in going with.
Okay.
At this point.
Thank you.
I would defer to Mr. Panzik, I guess, if you have anything else to add to that at this point.
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
Are we going to award the contract, or?
Yes.
I was just going to say, have we picked, uh, a, a select, uh, um, vendor?
Yeah, that's what we're here to do, because everyone has the proposals in front of them. Um, so I'm looking for a motion on either RKM Fireworks Company or Mad Bomber Fireworks Company. If I don't get a motion?
I'll make the same. I'll make the motion to go with Mad Bomber in the amount of $20,000 for the September 4th fireworks display.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Pandinas. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
No.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes four to one. Item J, this comes to us from the Safety Board. They're meeting on Monday to consider awarding the 2020 Police Directed Towing Service to Stan's Towing and to CubiX Service and Towing. Again, this comes with a favorable recommendation from the Safety Board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the 2020 Police Directed Towing Services to Stan's Towing and CubiX Service Towing.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That is approved, five to zero. Thank you. And I will go on to number eight, reports and correspondence from the town council. Mr. Schilling, anything?
Other than that, we should be wrapping up on the 41 and 96 project by the end of this week, or early next week. They're out there striping and setting the lanes up there on 41. I'm glad to see that come to an end.
You're talking about just the road part of it, correct?
Just the road part. Now we got Phase Two to get it to Charlie yet, but at least the 41 part will be done.
Okay.
And we'll lose the Indiana State flowers on 41 for a while.
Anything else?
No, nothing.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yeah, I'd like to say that Emmy Simpson is going through the neighborhoods doing a valve exercising program. And some of the residents will see in your parkway that they're digging up around the valve. It's about a six inch, it's eight inch diameter. Some complaints are coming in that the grass is messed up, but they got to get the grass off the valve so they can test, and at the same time, they're doing GPS. So if people are listening, you see that, that's what's going on. Real quick, I'd like to go back to doing, or trying to get in the habit of doing study sessions for the public. So we have a study session, and they know what we're talking about. When maybe a week later, we do our meeting, they'll know what we're talking about. Mission One was here last month and asking for $15,000 for a donation. They want to put a memorial park in the back of this building. I think it's a good idea, so I think it's something that we don't want to throw on the back burner too long. I think we should kind of consider that. Johnny Boersma does a great job with that, and it's for vets, and I think that'll be great. I want to thank our Public Works, our Police Department, our Fire Department, our Parks Department for doing everything that they do. I think it's great. I've been approached. There's a road behind McDonald's. It's a short road, but, well, it's short where it's damaged and tore up. It's privately owned, and I gave the paperwork to Mr. Westland to check into that. That starts at the parking lot where Strax is and continues north, and it's right directly behind McDonald's and behind another building, and then it crosses 97th Lane, and then it's all smooth sailing for half a block. And then the new road that's coming in for the shops in 96 has got the curb, but no blacktop. So I think we need to look at that and take a look at that, make sure it's paved, if we can get the owners to do that. We did-
That's the extension of Earl Drive, basically, correct?
Yeah, it's the extension. And-
You're talking about behind McDonald's?
Yeah, directly behind McDonald's, but there's a line there. Part is owned by one corporation, there's McDonald's, and the other part is by another person. I think I've given you all the pictures today, so you should have that. And I want to make an announcement that we, the Parks Department hired a new park director. He set the start about August 10th. And I want to thank the park board and everybody that was involved in that. They did a good job to try and find somebody, and we definitely need somebody to help run our parks. The people that are running the parks now are actually working. The college kids, the high school kids, they're doing a great job. They're respectful. They're hard workers, and I'm thankful that we have them. And I want to bring up another thing, painting of the concession stand at Civic Park. That's ours. It doesn't belong to baseball. You all received a bid in front of you today for $2,200. I'd like to continue with that, if you're so moved for that. If we have to okay that today, that's fine. I think that would help the appearance of that building. It probably hasn't been painted since they put it in in probably 1991. And then one last thing, Civic Park, there's a basketball court there, and again, that's owned by the town. Park Board approved that. To get that done, the redone, they're going to use tiles, 10 by 10 tiles, and I think you guys have a copy of that, too, in front of you. And I'd like to make a request that we get that taken care of, and that cost should not exceed $22,000. So if we can do that, I think that's great. That's from last year. The park board from last year said that was okay. That was under the do list for this year. So I think that would be great, and they're going to do two other parks, Larimer Park and Lancer. One is going to get blacktop. The other one's going to get tile. Lancer's going to get tiled. Larimer was kind of tore up, so too much that they're going to replace it and use blacktop. So two parks are going to get the tiles. That would be Civic Park and Lancer. And as long as we do more than, or two parks or more, we get a discount on that. So that one company that does the tiles, he's going to put up, I believe it's six hoops, two in each park. And then those have to go in in Larimer Park first, because when they do the blacktop, when they set up the lines and stuff, they got to know where the goal, not the goalpost, I'm thinking hockey, where the basket's going to be. So, and he wants to get started as quick as he can, so while he's here, he can do all the parks. So that's up to us to decide that now.
So because Civic Park is owned by the town?
Right.
The Park Department is going to pay out of their budget for the repairs to the basketball court?
Yes, sir.
So you're making a motion that we allow them to spend up to $22,000 to redo the basketball court here at Civic Park?
Yes, sir.
And that's your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any questions on that motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes. As far as the painting for $2,250 doesn't require action here because it's under the threshold?
Right, right.
So that can just be done.
Craig could sign off on that unless somebody objects. I'm for it.
Yeah. And then, did you accept the resignation of a park board member?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, yes. Yes, we did. One resigned, and we're up to three now. And we do have to interview one person. I couldn't get that out today, but we're hoping to interview him as soon as we can. And by the time we have the next meeting, we will have him appointed.
Okay.
If everybody agrees. I thought it would be better that, rather than just me interviewing, that we have another person from the town council, Mikey, Paul, or whatever, Brian. I think that would be better.
That's fine.
That's why, you know, it's-
Okay. So no action tonight?
No, no action tonight on that.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I've got five more items here, but no, I'm teasing.
Mr. Panzik?
A few things. I concur with the resident that approached Wayne about Earl Drive. We're about to unleash some more traffic on there. It's going to be about a little less than a year before it happens, but we need to prepare for that. It's an unusual situation. It's a private drive. We have easement access through there. So we need to sort that out and figure that out, because we, I could, I mean, I don't like it, and I could see people saying, well, now you got this new road leading to this, right? So I agree, we need to address that.
Is that something where we're going to have to buy the property, you know?
We'll discuss it. We could work that for sure. So, and we'll let Dave give us some suggestions. That wouldn't be something we'll figure out tonight, but we need to figure it out. Second thing regarding, Wayne mentioned study sessions, and I agree, and I just want to make the public aware that we'll be, we're in the process, we're actually kicking dates around for a study session, hopefully coming within a week or two, where our accountant will also be present, because we're going to talk about our five-year budget plan that we've all reviewed, but we'd like to review it for the public eye and talk about, finally get a chance here in July, August, to talk about what we plan to do over the next four years. So we have a lot of great ideas, and we want to bring them out to the public eye, and you could hear our accountant talk about the financial situation of our town as well. So really looking forward to that study session. I think we all are. Regarding US 41, as Mikey said, they're about to wrap up the portion between 93rd and 96th. South of 96, south end of town, you all probably noticed utility relocation happening from Nipco. The town is also going to be relocating a sanitary sewer. This is all in preparation to indot coming in next year to widen it. So current state is that indot expects to begin in spring with work in earnest. So sorry to say, it's going to be a painful summer next year, but we're going to end up with a turn lane all the way down to 231. It's going to be worth the trouble, but you're going to see some work throughout the rest of this year on the south end of town as they relocate utilities. So just be prepared for that. Last thing, I just want to bring up another thing Wayne mentioned is the Veterans Memorial. And me personally, as a councilman, I don't see a point to really put that off. I completely support it. I know Johnny wants to raise funds himself for it as well, but he's looking for the town to kickstart the effort with, he asked for 15,000 to engineering concepts, that kind of thing, and even maybe start some work on that. And I think we all supported giving the land for the town, so I'd like to, you know, bring that up for discussion now if you all are ready to just approve that now and get that rolling.
Yeah, that would be good. I didn't know if you guys wanted to do that, if you wanted to wait a month. Johnny does good work, and if he stays like that, he's also on the park board. He does a great job.
I think we're going to get a great memorial for 15,000, because I know how Johnny raises money.
Yeah.
And I'm sure he's going to take that money and probably double it. He'll put, you know, he'll fundraise for it, make it done right. And I think St. John needs a Veterans Memorial. Here we have somebody offering to do the legwork and run around, and all we need to do is a legislative body is, you know, kick in some from the town standpoint and give all of our residents a place to respect our veterans.
I'm going to give them a little piece of land back here. We have to okay that.
Right.
I think Johnny is going to do great with it.
Yeah, and then all the residents will benefit from that, to have a place to go reflect and, you know, honor our veterans. So I support that.
My concern would be the construction of that project and the engineering behind it. And the other thing would be the property. Mr. Westland, is there any concerns with that property letting? I mean, basically, it's going to be something the town is going to put up, but we're kind of in a-
So I don't have any issue with the donation of money tonight, if that's what your pleasure is. I did talk to Johnny after the meeting briefly about, you know, how are we going to work the donation, and does he have his 501(c)(3) and some of those other issues, and kind of told him that I would be happy to review that stuff for him. I haven't talked to him since our last meeting, so I'm a little hesitant. You know, if it's, you know, your desire to donate the land, then I'm just hesitant to have that approved tonight without a formal document saying what everybody's doing. Not saying we won't get there. I just don't think we can get there tonight with the land. Now, with regard to a donation, a monetary donation, that's a different story, and certainly within your purview to do that. So he gave me his card. My recollection is he was going to, he was going to reach out to me the next day or so after that. I never, I didn't hear from him, so I didn't follow up after that either. So I can certainly follow up with him, you know, in the next couple of days, but with regard to the land, but-
I'd like to have all, my personally, I'd like to have all those details resolved before we actually take some action.
Okay. Can I ask a question, too?
Yes.
So is it our intention to let him do the work in terms of design and engineering and that sort of thing, or do we do that, or how do you intend to approach that?
That's totally up in the air. I don't think that proposal has been made.
We kind of met with Johnny, and he's, it's over here by the sign for Civic Park and the rock. Well, there's going to be a flagpole, five flagpoles, I think, for all the branches of service, and he's, he wants to design it. I think he's got it kind of set in his head. I don't see a problem with him designing it, but I don't know legally, David. He can probably do that. Well, that, too, yeah.
Yeah, we would like to see the design, you know, let them run with it and then bring it to us. Also, just a detail to be worked out is Civic Drive. Some of what's there currently in Civic Park encroaches into the right-of-way of the drive, and I need to, we just need to make sure, we might have to move it over a little bit from what is initial plan. These are just technical-
Right, we just want to look at, make sure it's good.
Get that figured out, make sure there's correct right-of-way, because Civic Drive might go further someday. So make sure the right-of-way is there. So we need to define that boundary where that can be placed exactly, and that's the land part of it. So I don't think we're giving away any land. I think we're just setting aside a portion of land for it to be designed onto. So, yeah, I'm okay with putting it off one more month to get, let's get this wrapped up, though. Let's do it. And, you know, if that's, if Dave wants to get it in order, I see him taking notes now.
Yeah, I'd like, I guess, basically, I'd like to instruct Johnny to work with Mr. Westland and work with Craig to make sure that we get who's doing what.
Right.
As far as the design, the engineering, the build, and let's get that all together into one proposal. I don't think, I don't think telling him that we're going to donate $15,000 and it doesn't have to be done tonight for him to start his thing. I think he's looking for direction from us, and if we can give direction that we're willing to earmark that money, but it's got to be a part of a comprehensive proposal.
Yeah, I think when we, we had looked at it real quick, because he was just happening to be here and I was leaving, it's maybe 30 feet wide and down, down to the curb line here. But how far, I don't know. But, yeah, I think we need maybe a little bit better mapping, and that could work.
Okay. I like the idea, the suggestion of the three meeting.
Okay. So somebody's going to reach out to Johnny and let him know that?
Craig, you can do that?
I can reach out to him.
Okay.
Put a meeting together with Dave and-
Yep.
All right, good. Anything else, Paul?
No, that's all. Here we go.
Brian?
I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Beth?
Just one item. We need, my office needs, direction from the council as far as continued waiver of penalties for delinquent billing. So the resolution that you guys just amended goes from April, May, and June. So we at least need, at the very least, a motion for the July billing, and then what you would like to do going forward. I would, I would think, and Dave could correct me if I'm wrong, if you could at least get it in motion today, and maybe Dave could write up a resolution that would then be passed in August. But we definitely need some direction on your intentions.
Okay. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Well, we waived it for the severe months, and I don't know how much longer you're going to be waiving the fees.
Well, all we're doing is waiving late fees. We're not telling people they don't have to pay. And I think there's still a number of people that are, whether they're in transition, or they're laid off, or they're furloughed. And I think as long as this is going on, I'm okay. No, I wouldn't do that. I would be willing to do a month or two at a time. If you want to do July, and with the action that the governor just took, I would be comfortable with August as well, but it's up to you guys.
Does, Beth, I got a question for you. Last month, I think we were billing for the water. We were 30,000 behind. Is that, that's probably increased now more, or?
It is increasing. We sent out letters that I've shared with Dave just recently, and it's basically, usually, they would be considered our disconnect letters. These letters were altered a little bit, and I guess you would refer to them more of delinquency letters. It's clearly noted on each letter that delinquent shut-offs will not be conducted at this time, but just kind of letting some customers know what their balances are. We do have some that are ranging in balances well over $1,000, so it's a little bit concerning as far as how they're ever really going to kind of catch up on those payments. And in the letters, we are asking that they call our office to set up a payment arrangement schedule. But yes, the delinquent balance is growing. Usually, we may carry at most, don't put me on the number, but around 6,000 in delinquency. We're probably closer to 40,000 now, so something to consider.
Do you have a recommendation, Beth?
You know, I would, obviously, we need to do July. I would say August and September. You did three months the first time. That would put you at six months and give us a little bit of leeway. I don't see COVID going away before the September billing, because you remember that's September 1st. So I guess my recommendation would be to do July, August, and September, and then reevaluate as we get a little bit closer.
Okay. You okay with that, Mike?
Yeah.
So we will have a resolution for that at the next town council meeting, or is that going to be action taken tonight?
I can prepare a resolution. I think what Beth was looking for was sort of a general direction, so that we could have a resolution prepared.
So I'm fine with that. Are you okay with that, too, Beth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll deal with that, then at next month's, you'll have the resolution for that.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Beth? Anything else, Beth?
No.
Okay. Craig?
Okay, I have a few items. Just a quick update with regard to the community crossings, block grant, paving. That should be coming to an end this week, maybe Thursday, but Friday at the latest. All weather depending, but the weather, I guess, looks okay. So, we're hoping that'll wrap up. I know we've had a lot of questions from residents about the status of that. So, paving started, I believe, this morning and the actual overlay paving and then should be wrapped up in the next day or so. With regard to the water conservation, you know, information that was put out on the website and on social media, we are asking residents to please consider alternating their watering schedules so that odd numbered addresses, water on odd numbered days and even numbered addresses, water on, did I say even? Even days, sorry. We are going to be sending out a slip in the water bills, this upcoming water bill so that we can remind residents as well. Just wanted to let you know about that. So, there was also, I, I sent out today, I believe you guys received, but I just wanted to let the public know. We received a note from the Lake County Solid Waste Management District. It says, based on spike, a spike in coronavirus cases and the recommendation of the Lake County Health Department, the Lake County Solid Waste Management District is canceling the household hazardous waste collection that is scheduled for the Saturday, July 25th in Munster. And they wanted to just, they just asked us to pass this information along. So, I wanted to take that opportunity at the meeting tonight. And then just a reminder, you talked about the, you talked about the vacancy now as a result of the resignation on the park board. Just to remind you, you also have a vacancy on the sanitary board as well. That I know that the, I spoke to the previous, the vice president previously, wanted me to remind the council.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not sure if there are others at this time. I'm sorry? Well, okay, yeah, EDC, there's one, I believe, on the EDC as well. But those, I wanted to make sure you knew about the sanitary board because that was requested that I share that with you.
And we're still looking for candidates for the tree board, correct?
Correct.
We've not had enough applicants for that yet?
Correct. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Wasson, anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay, so I just have two items. One, that the community crossing grant next month should be the applications for the second half.
I should address that. I'm sorry. We did receive notification that the next grant round is delayed. They may reoffer it later this fall. But we did, we were notified that that application period is on hold for the time being. So, it, it may be later this year, if not early in 2021. I should have, I should have mentioned that, I'm sorry.
Which is really not a surprise considering the gas tax. Yeah, the income there has, has fallen off significantly. Okay, the other thing is that in the next few weeks, they're going to be wrapping up the census. And I would just encourage everyone in the town of St. John, if you have not filled out the forms for that, let's get that taken care of because that definitely will impact the money that we have coming in and the money that we have to work with. So, I would like everybody to make sure that that gets taken care of. With that, we can go on to number nine, the request to purchase. Beth?
Okay, so the first one, I'm just going to take a little bit of time on, and that is the police vehicle purchase to Thomas Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram. So, just to make sure that everybody's clear on this one, one of the police officers was in an accident that vehicle was totaled. We have received the insurance payment for that vehicle in the amount of $24,595.50. And that has been receiveded back into Fund 275. They are requesting, and there's, there's, it's difficult right now for our police to, to get vehicles, but they have found one Dodge Durango in stock that's being held for them currently. And the price for that vehicle is $31,000. So, they are asking for approval for the $31,000 expenditure for the Dodge Durango. And then what we'll end up having to, but do keep in mind that we have the $24,595 insurance payment. So, that really leaves a balance of just under $6,500. This will require down the road an additional appropriation though because they still have to put out the $31,000 and you guys need to approve them to spend that 24, you know, thousand that was receiveded in, if that makes sense. So, we need the approval for the $31,000. Then later down the road, we'll need an additional as well. So, just so that we're kind of clear on that. But the difference is really only $6,500.
Right. Any questions on that, gentlemen? Okay, go on.
Okay, so then, the next piece that goes along with the Durango is the vehicle equipment and upfitting, which are light sirens, computer mounts, weapon storage, and the, and car cameras. So, that will be $11,035.50. That goes on this new replacement vehicle. Again, it's my, and I anticipate this will also require an additional appropriation to be passed down the road. Any questions on that one?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, all right. So, then your more standard items would be Ferguson Water Works in the amount of $8,064. And this is for 24 water meter registers. You have a, a request to purchase for street patching in the amount of $3,600. That is to Holland Asphalt. Um, Coalliance LLP. This is for our gas, unleaded gas for our, our town vehicles in the amount of $11,226. We have, let me find the one, we have our unleaded too, or our leaded, or diesel. You have a request to purchase to Coalliance LLP again in the amount of $1,654 for our diesel gas. We have a NRTP to ESRI Inc. This is to renew the technical support and license agreement for the mapping software that the town uses. This is in the amount of $4,200.
Uh, it's actually a renewal. It's not a new purchase, it's a renewal.
Okay. Um, you have a request to purchase to Fire Service Inc. This came, I believe, with a favorable recommendation. I, you should correct me if I'm wrong on that one, from the safety board, the Chief Wilman. It is on of $16,650. And this one looks like it is what's called a brush truck. Mike would probably know more about that. We have a request to purchase to BND Sewer. Um, this is for an inlet install at 99th Avenue between Hurriche Street and Anniston Lane in the amount of $4,300. Chief Wilman again to Stryker in the amount of $36,061.96. And this is for, um, it looks like, um, like a life pack monitor and defibrillator for the ambulance, chest compression coaching devices and, and things of that sort. Um, and then lastly, NFEW Construction and Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $11,632. And this is for sidewalk and driveway repairs due to a water main break. That's it.
Did I miss one? I'm sorry, Great Lakes Recreation, did you say that one? For the...
Well, I mean...
Sorry, that was to parks, correct?
The park board did, this was an emergency purchase. So, you guys have what's called a campaign emergency purchase ordinance. Obviously, this would be an emergency purchase because the timer system on the splash pad was broken. So, therefore, water was running continuously. The park board did approve the purchase last night. It is over the $4,000 limit. So, I mean, it's, it's up to you. If you, you, we could throw it in the mix. Not going to hurt to have your approval on it as well. That's Great Lakes Recreation for the, a new splash pad controller timer in the amount of $5,285.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
And we also have one other one for the park. It was for 6,130, $6,130. And that was the enclosed, the dumpster that's out there now. There's been vandalism, they set it on fire. It was brought to our attention in the park board that yes, they, they need to enclose it. And then they're also going to replace some of the fencing that's along the parking lot. It's been kicked out or whatever. So, they got a company to do that. And they get, they did get a discount for having both things done at the same time. Looks like $300 on here.
Right.
So, I, I think that's all good to go. But that, that's what that's all about.
Okay.
Both items for the Parks Department are well within their budget, so...
Okay, thank you. So, do I have a motion to approve those requests to purchase?
I'll make a motion to approve the request to purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Pandinas. Do I have support for that? Thank you, Mr. Schilling, roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak? Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Klock?
Yes. Okay, so that approved 5 to 0. Payment of the bills for the corporation, item 10. I am looking for a motion. The docket is for $2,122,925.13. Do I have a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Panzek. Do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling.
I'll respect it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blazak. Now, roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Klock?
Yes. Okay, so that passes 5 to 0. Okay, so, let's just go around one more time before we adjourn. Mike, anything else?
No, nothing.
Wayne, anything else?
I'd like to, to say something about Joliet and 96, where Mighty Mike says the turn to come from the south, if you're going to go down Joliet. Where the sign is, there's, we never put a curb in there. And right now, there's some barricades. But if the barricades are gone, if a guy's driving a tractor trailer and not paying attention, most truck drivers want to take more of the turn than they, they need. And they're going to wipe out his sign. And I, I talked to Scott Pruitt. I don't know what we can do as a town. I don't think you could put something that's stationary that, that can maybe hurt a vehicle if they hit it or damage it. But we need to do something to maybe keep people aware that's making a turn that, you know, they can't go past that, whatever is marked out there.
Did Scott have a recommendation or an idea?
Yeah, no, he, he said that they couldn't put something that was, you know, you drill into the ground a post.
So, would maybe striping work?
Striping, maybe some cones like they have that, that are like they have, well, they had it on Joliet, on, on Joliet, on Kyleman in 93. A metal piece or maybe something like they use on the railroad tracks, like by Bingo Lake, maybe two, three of them to kind of show people where the turn is. Because if they're making a delivery down there, you don't want them to lose a sign.
So, those delineators, they were used down at the New Shell Station as well. So, the town could purchase those or a small quantity of them and Public Works could install them. And I mean, I, I know they could still be run over, but at least it's, it's visual.
It, it's visual, yeah. Somebody, somebody can see that.
Get around that.
But yeah, I think that would be good. I think Dave would be happy too. At least we're doing something and it gives somebody some visual thing that, hey, I'm getting close.
Right.
Because if you're making a turn and you're looking in your mirror, if you're driving a truck, like you, hopefully you can see that, but...
Okay. I, I have an issue with pedestrian safety there too. If somebody's out there on the, on the, on the red brick and it gets cut off, it's dangerous.
Right.
Okay, good. Anything else, Wayne?
That's it.
Paul?
Um, I just wanted to revisit the Heron Lake. It looks like those folks left already, but I didn't take the opportunity to comment before. So, I just want to make sure for the, again, for the public that, that we had exchanged multiple emails regarding that lake. So, it's an unusual situation. The, the park lakes are owned by the town, but also accessible by the public. So, we spend a little bit of money on a few of the park lakes, like Prairie West. And the whole town of St. John gets the benefit of that money spent and used. Private lakes are generally, as Wayne mentioned in the example of Lake Hills, the private lakes are maintained and owned by HOAs, especially when there's no public access granted. So, it's a little bit of a difficult situation. In fact, Heron Lake, I believe, is, we spend the most on out of all the lakes, and it's not even a public access lake.
Right.
Um, there's a lake behind my house in Kilkenian, never spent a penny on it. And it has deteriorated in the exact same way as Heron Lake. And what the report says, and, and this will be copied out to the residents, is that those lakes are dying. Uh, they're too shallow, so the sediment continues to build up. The phosphorus goes in. There's all, there's very little you can do to reverse that cycle short of spending a ton of money. And you, and it's not a one-time spend. It's a continual yearly spend, but it's still slowly but surely dying and trying to revert to a wetland. So, it's a difficult situation with Heron Lake because it is private, private access, private owned. I'm sorry, private, completely surrounded by private. So, the town, again, generally doesn't spend money on those lakes. So, they're, Heron Lake is already getting something that other lakes aren't getting, that are surrounded by private property. And, and I'm, like I said, I, I live next to one of those lakes that's not getting treated. So, that's a difficult situation and to sort through. So, we've offered to spend almost $10,000, as has been done in the past. It's not working as good because the lake is just dying. But again, we'd be happy to release that report.
And I don't know if we changed people doing that because there's usually like one guy that does it. And I, I thought his name was Colin, but I'm not sure.
For the past several, yeah, for the past several years, Colin.
I don't think we've changed him. I think he's been around for a good 15 years, but you know, I...
We could double check it.
Right, you can check it, Craig.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that we've been with Colin for quite some time.
Right. So, the, the fish kills are, one of the things reported in the report is that those things are going to happen as the lake continues to get shallower. It's like a, it's a death spiral. And, and again, Kilkeny Lake is in the exact same situation. Regarding mosquito spray, I'd be open to discussion on that at some point. So, it's something we could talk about. A lot of residents want it. So, maybe we need to reevaluate where we're at with that.
Well, I know one thing I, I just wanted to say, and, and I think Wayne and Mike know this as well, but we spray at night. And I know this because we have, you know, guys that have to go out at night to do this. And, and you know, they don't like it, but they do it because it's after hours, it's a night. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, that I understand fully some of the comments that were made, I guess, because like I said, it's happening at night. It happens after hours.
Yeah, it's hard. I mean, you see people walking out spraying. And you got to turn it off, turn, I mean, and some, some kids will run behind you on bicycles.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, some of their neighbors next to them want to...
Right.
So, it, it's a hard, what do you, you spray, you don't spray. And then, you know, they change. It, it's hard to please everybody.